Good afternoon, everyone. My name is City Council President Ed Flynn. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone here to be respectful of each other during the meeting. If you are disruptive, you'll be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you'll be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor O'Royo. Counselor Baker. Yes. Counselor Braden.
Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Laura. Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
And Counselor Worrell.
Okay. At this time, we don't have a quorum. We're in a brief recess until... We do have a quorum, which is seven councilors present, but I do want to start the meeting on time, but we do have to take a brief recess. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor O'Royo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Laura. Counselor Louie Jean.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell. There's a quorum present.
We have a quorum present. This week's clergy is invited by City Councilor Louie Jean at this time. I would like to call City Councilor Louie Jean to the podium and introduce our clergy for today, please.
Thank you, President Flynn, and good afternoon, everyone. At large, City Councilor Louie Jean, and it is my honor and privilege to have as our clergy for today Reverend Laura Everett. I've had the pleasure of working with Reverend Laura when we worked together on an event for the... in the city's Equity Cabinet, really about bringing the city together. And so Reverend Laura, happy to continue building with you and working with you. Reverend Laura moves in between. She's not one thing, and she suspects neither are we. She moves in between her work as a pastor, an unabashed urbanist, a textile artist, a transit justice activist, and a bicycle evangelist. She wants freedom for all of us. The Reverend Laura Everett serves as Executive Director of the Massachusetts Council of Churches. A graduate of Brown University, Reverend Laura received her Master of Divinity from Harvard Divinity School. Ordained by the United Church of Christ, Reverend Laura is formed by many parts of the Church. She is happiest exploring somewhere new, preferably by bike. Reverend Laura is the author of Holy Spokes: The Search for Urban Spirituality on Two Wheels, Bicycle Enthusiast. Committed to the renewal and thriving of vibrant Christian institutions, she serves as an advisor with leadership education at Duke Divinity School. Reverend Laura is also the co-host of the podcast Candy's Bones with Bill Lamar from Faith and Leadership at Duke Divinity School. Reverend Laura aims for attraction, not persuasion. A moderately competent seamstress—her words, not mine, she probably is really good—Reverend Laura loves working with her hands. She's also an avid women's sports fan. Shout out to the Women's World Cup coming up. You can give a shout out for that, but this Friday at Saigon Seafood in Fields Corner at 9:00 p.m., we'll be watching the game. She is New Jersey by birth, Massachusetts by choice, and calls JP home for her and her wife. Reverend Laura, thank you for being with us today.
Good afternoon, Council. The scripture I'm leading with today is from the Gospel of John, Chapter 14. "Do not let your hearts be troubled; believe in God, believe also in Me. In My Father's house there are many dwelling places. If it were not so, would I have told you that I go to prepare a place for you? And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and will take you myself, so that where I am there you may be also." These were Jesus's words. Jesus makes these promises and tells the people to calm down. "Don't worry, I've got this," he says. Clearly, Jesus has not had to look for affordable housing on September 1 in Boston. Jesus has not had to drive a U-Haul on Storo Drive. Jesus says, "Take the wheel; let not your hearts be troubled," he says, which we all know is the best thing to tell people whose hearts are troubled. Maybe Jesus has not had to be to a deliberative body lately. Beloved, this is the Scripture text of deep, nearly unimaginable hospitality. And I have sympathy for disciples who can't seem to wrap their minds around this idea of what Jesus is saying. Thomas struggles to understand. Philip asks to be shown more. They seek proof. They seek literal understanding of what is entirely relational. But the kicker is this: The word in Greek for dwelling place is less like a Wellesley mansion and more like a Boston triple-decker, because the scriptural vision of heaven is always an entirely urban. What if we actually believed that there was room enough for all? What if we actually believed and prayed and legislated and behaved like there is room enough for all? As you are able and willing and led, pray with me. Holy One, as we begin again this day the sacred work of governing, we pause to re-center ourselves and our vision. Help us stop for just a moment. Help us remember what is true, what is just, what is fundamental, and what is real. God, there is enough. We are enough. There is enough. When the world tells us there is scarcity, but you promise abundance we need, not grasp and claw. If in our parents' house there are many rooms, we can rest assured that there is enough space for all, then let us breathe. God, what if we lived? What if we lived, Lord, as if there were enough for all? Yes, in our backyards, yes, in our neighborhoods, yes, in the hall, yes, in this house, yes, even here. In our Father's house, there are so many rooms. God, help us to know this. Help us to feel it. Help us to believe it. God, help us to know our work is to know deep in our bones that there is space enough, there's place enough in our parents' house enough for all. Let us say it 1,000 times, repeat it daily if we must. There is enough space for all. Make it so clear to ourselves and to each person around us that it becomes the unshakable truth of our lives, that we are fundamentally at home, that all who reside here, that all who reside in this city, that all who find themselves here and passing through are indeed at home. You, who are our home, be with us this day. We know you by many names. I claim you again, Jesus, my Savior and friend. Alleluia. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Reverend. Could you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Laura, for being here with us and for those inspiring words. At this time, I'm going to ask City Council Braden to please come to the podium to recognize and introduce some special guests that you invited. And, Mr. Clerk, can you ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Laura and Counselor Coletta are present, and Counselor Worrell as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my great pleasure to invite... to welcome into the hall today the youth group from the BCYF Jackson Man Community Center. They were... came in this morning to see how city government works, to visit the chamber, to visit our offices, and just get a sense of how important city government is and how we get the nuts and bolts of what we do every day for our communities. So the folks with their way up there in the back, if you'd like to come down and have a photograph taken with the city councilors. And then invite my colleagues to come up and join us to say hello and have a photograph taken. Thank you. These are the young leaders of our future Boston—young leaders right now, but leaders of the future, so we're very welcome to have them in here to learn about how city government works today. And get everybody into the photograph.
Yeah. Come on in.
Everybody in? All right. One more. Annie?
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming in. Enjoy the rest of your conference.
Thank you for joining us. Thanks for being here. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for joining us. Good to be with you guys. Thank you for joining us. Thank you. It's good to be with you. Good to have you here. Mr. Clerk, we're on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter. The chair moves to move to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read?
Bless you.
Docket 1190, please.
Docket number 1190, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court entitled petition for a special law relative to an act related to creation of the Boston Public Library within an affordable housing development in the Dorchester section of the City of Boston.
Thank you. This docket, 1190, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, the next docket is 1191 and 1194.
Docket number 1191, message in order for your approval, in order to reduce the fiscal year '23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $402,150 to provide funding for the Public Health Commission for the fiscal year '24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Public Health Commission and the SEIU Local 888 Programs Unit, filed in the office of the City Clerk July 17, 2023. Docket number 1192, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Public Health Commission for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $402,150 to cover the fiscal year '24 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Public Health Commission and SEIU Local 888 Programs Unit. The terms of the contracts are October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increase of 2% in January 2021, 1.5% in January 2022, and January 2023. Docket number 1193, message in order for your approval, in order to reduce fiscal year '24 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $170,390 to provide funding for the Public Health Commission for the fiscal year '24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society Forensics Group, filed in the office of the City Clerk July 17, 2023. Docket number 1194, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $170,390 to cover the fiscal '24 costs of items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society Forensics Group. The terms of the contracts are October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of a contract term.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and these dockets represent contracts between the Public Health Commission and SEIU Programs Unit and the Police Union's Forensic Unit. Both include retroactive pay increases consistent with those seen in other renewed contracts, and both fall well under $600,000. Given their low amount and our limited summer schedule, I request suspension of the rules and passage of these dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. We'll do each docket individually. Counselor Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and pass of the docket 1191. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
I'll vote for the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 1191. Counselor O'Royo.
Yes.
Counselor O'Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Aye.
Counsel Coletta, aye. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Laura.
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1191 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Counsel Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and pass of the docket 1192. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
I'll vote for the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 1192. Counselor O'Royo.
Yes.
Counselor O'Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Laura.
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1192 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
The docket has passed. Counsel Worrell seeks suspension of the rules. Pass of the docket 1193. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I'll vote for the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1193. Counselor O'Royo.
Yes.
Counselor O'Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, aye. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Laura.
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1193 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Counsel Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and pass of the docket 1194. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I'll vote for the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1194. Counselor O'Royo.
Aye.
Counselor O'Royo, aye. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Laura.
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1194 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1195?
Docket number 1195, message in order for your approval, in order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $19,610,000 for the purpose of paying costs, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new building for the William E. Carter School at 396 Northampton Street in the City of Boston.
Thank you. This docket, 1195, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1196?
Docket number 1196, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4,550,000 in the form of a grant for the MBI Digital Equity Partnership Program to be administered by the Broadband and Equity. The grant will fund services and support for residents of the Commonwealth who cannot afford broadband services and/or Internet-connected devices or lack the digital literacy skills needed to utilize the Internet. literacy skills needed to utilize the internet.
Thank you. This docket, 1196, will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1197?
Docket number 1197, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3 million in the form of a grant for the Transforming Boston Grant awarded by the Andrew Mellon Foundation to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the support of community and curatorial partnerships, new temporary commemorative installations, and related public art programs.
Thank you. This docket, 1197, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1198, please?
Docket number 1198, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,312,297 in the form of a grant for the Community Benefits Agreement awarded by the Boston Planning and Development Agency to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund transportation improvements.
Thank you. This docket, 1198, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1199?
Docket number 1199, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,279.84 in the form of a grant for VSB Horrigan stock donations awarded by Joan Horrigan, passed through the City of Boston Trust Fund to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund various expenses at the Veronica B. Smith Senior Center in Brighton.
Thank you. This docket, 1199, will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1200.
Docket number 1200, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $38,000 in the form of a grant for the MHC Fiscal Year 23 Survey and Planning Grant awarded by the United States Department of the Interior, passed through the Massachusetts Historical Commission to be administered by the Office of Historical Preservation. The grant will fund surveys that compile historical and architectural information about building in East Boston.
Thank you. This docket, 1200, it will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Mr.? The, the chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think docket 1200, with the amount and like we have limitations on our schedule, I think we should just suspend the rules and accept this grant.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Baker. Mr. Clerk, Counsel Baker is seeking suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, 1200. Can we do a roll call vote on this?
Roll call vote on docket 1200. Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louzhen.
Yes.
Counsel Louzhen, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Wrell.
Yes.
Counsel Wrell, yes. Docket number 1200 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next docket, 1201, Mr. Clerk?
Docket number 1201, message in order for your confirmation of the appointment of Donna Moore as an Inspektional Services Constable, authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the, of her bond for the period commencing May 1, 2023 and ending April 30, 2026.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just moved for passage in the, uh, no, uh, under the ordinary circumstances to get this constable, uh, able to serve civil process in the City of Boston. So, uh, moving for expedited, expedited passage.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules, confirmation of this docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1202.
Docket number 1202, communication from the mayor in regards to the fiscal 2024 budget that has taken effect.
Thank you. This docket, 1202, it will be placed on file. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1203 to 1208.
Docket number 1203, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city from Thursday, June 29, 2023, at 1:00 p.m., returning Friday, June 30, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. Docket number 1204, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Priscilla Rojas as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026. Docket number 1205, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Parker as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026. Docket number 1206, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Diana Fernandez as a member of the Boston Art Commission. Docket number 1207, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Natalia Anitaz Perez as a trustee of the Make Boston Shine Trust Fund. And docket number 1208, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Priscilla McKenzie Kinsey-Bach as administrator of the Boston Housing Authority, effective August 7, 2023.
Thank you. These dockets will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, the next docket is 1209, please.
Docket number 1209, the constable bond of Bianca Pierre having been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer is received.
Thank you. This docket, 1209, has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Matter's recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, can you read dockets 1097 and 1098?
Docket number 1097, message in order for your approval, in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $1,273,531 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 12, 2023. Docket number 1098, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $1,273,531 to cover fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. The terms of the contracts are July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023, and July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 1.5% in July of 2021, 2% in July of 2022, 2% in July 2023, 2% in July 2024, and 2% in July 2025. The agreements also contain other benefits, including a mobile integrated health community EMS adjustment and increased hazardous duty differentials.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Wrell, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counsel Wrell, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, President Flynn. And the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology held a hearing for dockets 1097 and 1098, sponsored by Mayor Wu, and referred to the committee on June 14, 2023. These dockets relate to the collective bargaining agreement between BPHC and the EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. The committee was joined by Jim Hooley, Chief of Boston EMS, Jim Williamson, Budget Director for the City of Boston, Lou Mandarini, Senior Advisor for Labor, Matthew Anderson, EMS Union President, and Nicholas Mutter, EMS Union Secretary, all of whom provided testimony on behalf of the administration. Also in attendance were Counsel President Flynn, Counsel Murphy, and a letter of absence from Counsel Mejia. Mr. Mandarini stated that the administration is proud of this contract and believes it is a fair and provides economic security to the workers it will impact. This contract raises, raises the wages these workers both through general wage increases and premium related to mobile integrated health. Uh, Mr. Mandarini, Mandarini stated that the contract will implement a mandatory influenza vaccine and mobile integrated health initiative, which has the ability to reshape how emergency medical technicians, EMTs, paramedics, and others respond to emergencies and gives the opportunity for divergence and different responses to the people of Boston in need of emergencies. Chief Hooley discussed MIH and stated that it allows for new patient-centered response models, including the transfer of 911 calls to telehealth providers, alternative responses by non-ambulance response units, and transport to non-hospital facilities. MIH programs include TeleBest, a program that allows willing patients that have demonstrated behavioral health emergencies to be transferred from a 911 call taker to behavioral healthcare clinicians through the Boston Emergency Service Team, also known as the BEST Team. Uh, alternative destination transport for patients experienced substance use disorder by taking them to a stabilization care center in the alternative, uh, response unit that would have an EMT partner with the BEST Behavioral Health Clinician to respond, respond to emergencies. As Chair of the Committee on City Service, City Services and Innovation Technology, I recommend, recommend that the matters ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wrell. Counsel Wrell seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 1097. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Counsel Wrell seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 1098. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. I also want to recognize, um, Chief Hooley for being here, for the professional work that you and your team are doing, but also the men and women throughout your department that do an excellent job every day for the residents of Boston. Will you let the men and women of EMS know that the council sends our best regards to them, Chief? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0864?
Docket number 0864, message in order for your approval of, of the receipt of the preservation restriction on the Hayden Building, 681, 683 Washington Street, Boston, Mass. 02111.
The chair recognizes couns- The chair recognizes Counsel Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development. Um, we're gonna have to go. On this docket, um, the chair recognizes Vice Chair, Counsel Wrell. Counsel Wrell, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Counsel President Flynn. Uh, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and was referred to the committee on May 3, 2023. A public hearing was held yesterday. Uh, the committee had heard testimony from Joseph Cornish, uh, Director of Design Review at the Office of Historic Preservation, and Kathy Corteris, Executive Director of Historic Boston Incorporated. Mr. Cornish and Ms. Corteris gave the committee an historical update and overview of the Hayden Building. They explained to the, to the, uh, they explained that the docket asks for authorization for the Boston Landmarks Commission as the Preservation Planning Agency. The sale of the building is pending contingent on approval of preservation restrictions. Ms. Corteris mentioned that Historic Boston Incorporated will work with Grantor to develop mutually satisfactory solutions, which are in the best interest of preserving the historic values of this property. It was a healthy and insightful hearing, and as Vice Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation, I recommend at this time this matter ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel Wrell. Counsel Wrell, the Vice Chair of the Committee seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of this docket, 0864. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you ensure the record is reflected? Counsel Fernandez Anderson is present. Mr. Clerk, docket 1210 is being withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1211.
Docket number 1211, Counsel Flynn offered the following ordinance amending City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2-8.3.
Thank you. This, this is an ordinance relating to the budget of our city council offices and central staff, which adjusts the budget and salary ranges based on the approved FY24 city council budget. As you know, this is a routine ordinance that is filed every year after the approval of the city budget and will allow each office to have an updated budget to operate on. My team and I worked with central staff to review the budget approved by the city council and mayor Wu and filed the salary ordinance based on the approved FY24 city council budget. The ordinance reflects a $26,500 increase from FY23 for the staff allocation in each city council's office, which is an 8.4 increase from last year. Each, each council office now has $341,500 for staff allocation for FY24, up from $315,000 in FY23. The president's office has a $15,000 increase, which is a 3.9% increase from last year. The council president's office now has $400,000 for staff allocation, up from $385,000 from last year. We have also increased the salary ranges for several central staff positions. During my time as city council president, I have tried my best to right-size our staff salaries. Please note that in FY22, each council office budget was $257,000. Then the budget for each office was raised to $315,000 in FY23. And now it is raised again to $341,000. This represents a $57,000 increase or 32% increase in budget allocation for each council office from FY22 to FY24. I'm looking to suspend and passes, and pass this today like we did so in past years, so that we can use these funds in a timely manner. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, 1211. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 1212.
Docket number 1212, counselors Coletta and Louzhen offered the following ordinance establishing an affordable housing demolition fee by amending the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 18, Section 18-1.2B, fees and charges regarding building and demolition permits.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel President Flynn. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Wrell as the third cosponsor.
Hearing no objection, Counsel Wrell is out of the chair. Recognizes Counsel Coletta.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This is a proposal, the start of a conversation, to increase the fee in the city of Boston to demolish a single-family, two-family, or multifamily, up to fifteen-thousand dollars or five-thousand dollars for each unit in the structure, whatever is more. The funds received will be deposited directly into the Neighborhood Housing Trust to preserve and expand affordable housing for low and moderate-income residents while encouraging smart, responsible underscore smart, responsible growth within the existing frameworks of our communities. This proposal establishes a stick approach that is intended to incentivize developers economically to explore all possible options before tearing down a family home and building out of scale in comparison to the abiding properties. Our current demo fee is a measly fifty dollars, which is unlike any other municipality in the country. It's a drop in the bucket for large developers in the city. This is a wonderful and good opportunity to generate funds and is within our power to implement as a fee. This type of fee has been implemented before in Evanston, Illinois. Evanston collected data that showed low or moderately priced homes were being demolished and replaced with higher-priced housing well beyond the reach of buyers. Since 2000, Evanston has experienced a loss of affordability with a significant increase in homes priced at or above one-million dollars. It's a very similar situation to the gentrification occurring in the city of Boston and in particular in my neighborhood in East Boston. I understand this is just one approach to creating and preserving and protecting affordable housing in the city, but I believe this is and can be another tool in our toolbox. Since its implementation in Evanston in 2006, it has generated over a million dollars to go into the funding, their funding, for affordable housing. Their fee is slightly lower. What I'm proposing is about a couple thousand dollars more than what they have there. This is certainly the first of many conversations. There has to be carve-outs, particularly including a provision for owner occupants who demolish their homes in order to construct replacement homes for their own use. Additionally, we have to have conversations regarding instances of fires, building collapse, natural disasters, and flooding. All of this has already been brought to my intention, so I really look forward to engaging my colleagues, getting their feedback, and having upcoming hearings expeditiously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Councilor Coletta, for your leadership on this. I am really happy to be cosponsoring this ordinance to have a discussion about, really, how are we garnering more money to tackle the crisis of affordability in our city? And how do we get more money in to the trust that will allow us to build and construct more affordable housing? As Councilor Coletta stated, there's already cities, you pointed out Evanston, there are other cities in Illinois that do this, there are other cities around the country that do this, and it's actually one of the local housing solutions that people look to when we're talking about affordable housing. Councilor Coletta mentioned having certain carve-outs and exemptions, and I look forward to those conversations, especially one where if the purpose of the demolition is actually for affordable housing construction, what we've already talked about. And so I think that this is a good conversation for us to be putting on the table as we are having the dual conversation of how do we both get more affordable housing, how do we get more affordable housing construction to happen? You know, I think Reverend Everett said that there's room enough for all of us, and we have to make sure that we are getting the funding necessary to make sure that there is, in fact, room for all of us, that we are garnering the income from development that has really ensured that certain populations, developers, and the wealthy, ensure their prosperity. And I think this is about making sure that we're able to spread that prosperity around via affordable housing. So I look forward to my colleagues, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Worell, doing work on this ordinance to make sure that it lives up to what we want it to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Councilor Worell. Councilor Worell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you, Councilor Coletta, for your leadership on this, and to Council Louie Jean. This is a creative way to preserve and protect our neighborhoods, now more than ever. Increasing affordable housing is imperative to the success of our city, and we need solutions that create density in ways that make sense for our residents. This bill, which I'm excited about, helps generate more revenue for the city of Boston, incentivizes the creation of affordable housing, and aims to prevent the destruction of single- and two-family home neighborhoods, which I believe are the cultural fabric of our city. By implementing higher demolition costs for these homes, we not only disincentivize projects that change the character of our cities, but we focus on building density along our major corridors and generate funds that can be invested in our neighborhood housing trust. I'm looking forward to the conversation and putting up those guardrails and frameworks to make this successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Worell. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Laura. Council Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to rise to thank my colleagues for introducing this ordinance and speak in support of it. As the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee here on the Boston City Council, I think that I am intimately aware, but I think we're all aware that Boston is facing a housing crisis where low and middle-income families are being priced out of our city. And we're seeing the demolition of affordable and potentially affordable housing to very low cost to developers, and many of these units are single-family homes or multifamily home units. I think that this ordinance is not only a matter of helping us preserve affordable housing, but it's also an issue of place-making and community building. I think that Council Louie Jean has long been lifting up the conversation about building more revenue in the city, and like Councilor Worell said, I think this is a really creative way to really make sure that that's happening. In Highland Park, Illinois, they have a similar fee for housing trust revenue system that is just like the one proposed here, or at least a draft proposed here by my colleagues, and it's really provided significant revenue for the Neighborhood Housing Trust while not deterring development, which I think is a big concern for us here on the council. I think it'll be a victory in our fight to preserve and fund more affordable housing in the neighborhoods, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Laura. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Braden, Councilor Laura, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Murphy. Please add the Chair. This docket, one-two-one-two, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket one-two-one-three.
Docket number one-two-one-three, Councilor Murphy offer the following order for a hearing to address the disparity in pay between our Boston Fire and Boston Police Cadets.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. And I'd like to suspend Rule twelve and add Councilor Mejia and Councilor Louie Jean if no one objects. Thank you.
Hearing no objection. Council Mejia and Council Louie Jean are added. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy.
Thank you. I'd first like to shout out Police Cadets Anthony and Gabriella. I see our Police Cadets around the city at all of the events that they attend, and the two of them brought to my attention at an event I was at a couple weeks ago at Ventura Park, that although they're happy that the Fire Department has instituted a cadet program, they were concerned that they were and continue to be paid less than the Fire Cadets, which was something I was not aware of. So I am filing this hearing order because the Boston Police Department's Cadet Program, which started back in 2016, is a civilian-paid and benefited position within the Boston Police Department. It's a two-year, full-time commitment, and this program is primarily geared toward individuals with interest in pursuing a career in law enforcement and experience learning in our world-class B P D community policing model. The Boston Fire Department Cadet Program, which just started this year, is a civilian-paid and benefited position also within the Fire Department. This program is also a two-year commitment for those who are interested in pursuing a career in firefighting and is modeled after our Boston Police Cadet Program. Both cadet programs have identical requirements to apply. You need to be between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five before the first date of employment. You need to have a high school diploma or a G E D equivalency, be a current resident in the city of Boston, and have maintained residency for the last five years, and have a valid Massachusetts driver's license and a good driving record. The starting salary of a Boston Police Cadet is twenty-eight thousand. The salary of a Boston Fire Cadet is thirty-one thousand. I believe that the Boston Police and the Boston Fire Cadets should be paid the same. It's something I have to admit, I assumed they were when we started this new program. And when we have this hearing order, I know more will come up, but other towns around us and cities do pay their cadet program more, and the Massachusetts State Police Cadet Program start their cadets at thirty-eight to forty-thousand dollars. So I'm looking forward to this hearing. I hope my colleagues participate with us to make sure that our cadets are paid equitably across the city. So thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague for her leadership in this space. I, as the Chair of Workforce Development and Labor and Economic Empowerment, believe that this is something that we really need to lean into, because when we're thinking about city jobs for city kids, we need to do everything in our power to ensure that we are paying our workforce and honoring the work that they're doing. And I think that as we continue to have these conversations, I'd be intrigued to see across the board, all of the city departments, in terms of how much we're paying people in entry level. So I think this is a good start, but I think that we could be doing more to ensure that those who live here can actually afford to stay here. So looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank my colleagues, Council Murphy, for this filing, and Council Mejia, who was also on the filing. We actually have done the work of looking at our lowest-paid income, our lowest-paid workers here in the city, and it's a study that we actually asked the city to do, so we have that information and will be getting it, and it will be filed, because it is extremely important that in this city that is unaffordable and cost-prohibitive for so many people, that we want people to work for the city at low wages. It's unacceptable. We were here, and it was a hearing that Council Tanya Fennan Anderson chaired during budget, and we were hearing from the Fire Department about the Fire Cadet Program, a program that I am very enthusiastically supportive of and happy to see the cadet program really reflecting our city, but then really disheartened to learn of how much the cadets were making. And a lot of them have second and third jobs. And the cadet program in part is really to help us ensure that we have firefighters that really reflect what our city looks like. Oftentimes, a barrier to entry to a lot of jobs is pay, and we've had having that conversation at different levels for different people who work for the city. So I think it's really appropriate that we continue the conversation, that we are glad that we have the Fire Cadet Program started, we're glad that they're getting paid something. We want to make sure that it is an attractive enough salary so that people can actually enter these cadet programs. And so I'm looking forward to this hearing, and I want to thank Chief Lawrence in the People Cabinet, because it was her office that after my office put forward the study on low-income wages in the city, that we are going to be able to make progress. And I think this hearing and hearings like it are part of a solution of how do we, as a city, be the example for other employers, other industries, when we're talking about setting salaries and setting a wage? I support a municipal minimum wage so that we can be an example. When we're standing in solidarity with our unions, we can also say that we are leading on this topic from within City Hall. So I'm happy for this hearing. Again, I want to thank my colleague for putting this forward, and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Laura. Councilor Worell, please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you read docket one-two-one-four, please?
Docket number one-two-one-four, Councilors Mejia and Flynn offer the following resolution recognizing the month of July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add my council colleague, Councilor Murphy, to join us.
Hearing no objection. Council Murphy is added. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just want to shout out and acknowledge all the beautiful young people that just walked into our chamber, because they say that young people are the future. I believe that they are the present, and I'm so happy to see them here today. So, welcome to the chamber, y'all. All right, so I'd like to just suspend the rules and ask my council colleagues to vote in the affirmative to pass a resolution to officially declare the month of July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Boston. We live in a city that thrives on diversity, and it is this very diversity that we should celebrate and embrace. Disability Pride Month is observed globally each year during July, provides us with an opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the accomplishments, struggles, and contributions of individuals with disabilities. Disability Pride Month serves as a platform to promote inclusivity, raise awareness about disability rights, and challenge the stigma and discrimination that exist. By encouraging respect and equity, we can create an environment where every individual feels valued and appreciated for their unique abilities and contributions. In promoting the empowerment and well-being of individuals with disabilities, we strive to ensure equal access to education, employment, healthcare, transportation, and social opportunities. Today, we make a statement that the voices of the people with disabilities matter and that they're an integral part of our city. We acknowledge the importance of removing barriers and increasing accessibility to achieve the full participation of individuals with disabilities in all aspects of life. Together, let us send a powerful message of acceptance, support, and celebration to our residents with disabilities, affirming our commitment to building a city where everyone can be included and able to reach their full potential. Now, I always talk about the fact that I walk into spaces and really about like how we can just embrace all of our little rough edges. And I think as we continue to see people and really acknowledge that everyone is carrying whatever they carry into a space, but oftentimes disabilities are unseen, so I just want to note that as we continue to talk about disabilities, that we are seeing all different types of forms and celebrating and not just tolerating all of the people who live here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn and Councilor Mejia, for letting me join in on this. I joined both of you yesterday on City Hall Plaza as we celebrated thirty-three years of the passing of the American with Disabilities Act. I also want to shout out the Massachusetts Commission of the Blind, who my office we're working in partnership with, is a former student of mine from the Murphy School, Rakim, who is here in the chamber with us, is working in our office this summer. So, thank you, Rakim. You're bringing so much to our office. I appreciate all you do. So, that being said, a lot has changed, and I was a special ed teacher in the Boston Public Schools for many years, and things are better, but they're not where they need to be. And the broader community of people with disabilities still face structural systemic challenges, and we must provide healthy funding for long-term services and supports, be cognizant of the importance of the community assimilation, and how vital it is for people with disabilities to transition out of any situation where they feel like they're not welcome or they can't fit in. So I applaud Mayor Wu. I know that this year we were highlighting the streets team and making sure that all of our streets and buildings are accessible, but we have to also make sure that our policies and where we put our money and our budget is also being cognizant of all of these issues. So thank you, Council Mejia and Councilor Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to my colleagues. I think, you know, the American Disabilities Act, a lot of like the progress that we see in a lot of spaces for folks who have been marginalized or historically excluded, is really, you know, the legislation that really has helped to support these movements. And I think about the A D A, the American with Disabilities Act, there's been a lot of progress made because of that in requiring people in places of employment to provide reasonable accommodations, I think about in the housing space as well. And so there's still a lot of work to do, but just wanted to celebrate all of the activists and all the leaders who really pushed for the A D A to become law. And I also just wanted to uplift, and Council Mejia said this, there are disabilities that we see and there are disabilities that we don't see, and especially when we're talking about Black and Brown and Black and Brown women, especially the folks I know in my life who suffer and live with lupus, sickle cell anemia, M S, a lot of these invisible disabilities that really are chronic and disproportionately affect communities of color. So just wanted to let people know who often aren't seen for what they live with chronically, that we see them, that we are here for them, that they deserve reasonable accommodations so that they can live out life and work just like everyone else. So, happy Disability Pride Month to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. As an original cosponsor, I'll speak very briefly. Honored to join my colleagues on the City Council as an original sponsor, but also to be at the event yesterday celebrating Americans with Disability Act. It's probably the best piece of federal legislation maybe over the last fifty years, bipartisan piece of federal legislation that impacts so many people across the country. It's a civil rights issue. I also want to acknowledge Council Flaherty and myself, our friend who's the Commissioner McCosh at the City of Boston Disability Access Office, along with Rob Santiago, who's the Commissioner of Veterans Services, and Rob's a fellow disabled veteran, but I want to recognize Rob for the work he does in supporting the disability rights community as well. Would anyone else like to speak or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Laura, Council Louie Jean, Council Worell. Councilor Mejia, Flynn, and Murphy seek suspension of the rules in passage of this docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This docket has passed. We're on to the next docket, one-two-one-five.
Docket number one-two-one-five, Councilor Flynn offer the following resolution to improve safety along Department of Conservation and Recreation parkways in the Fenway.
The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Braden. This is a resolution to request D C R, which is This is a resolution to request DCR, which is obviously a state agency to lower the speed limit for the parkways adjacent to the Fens, which is in the Back Bay area, the Fenway area, from 30 miles per hour to the citywide standard of 25 miles per hour. Earlier this year, the State House passed an act to reduce traffic fatalities. This law grants new petitioning powers to city officials to lower speeds on state-controlled roads, and this resolution would allow us to do that. Specifically, this resolution would request that the speed limit along DCR parkways in the Fenway or the Back Bay be reduced from 30 miles to 25 miles, which aligns with our city's speed limit. The Fens is currently flanked by two DCR parkways, Park Drive and the Fenway, that have multiple traffic lanes, inadequate safety measures, pedestrian crossings, and a natural traffic speed that exceeds the posted 30 miles per hour, which is a dangerous situation for pedestrians. Lowering the speed limit to 25 miles would improve pedestrian safety and access to one of Boston's most beloved parks as part of the city's ongoing mission to ensure the safety of pedestrians across the City of Boston. This is something Counselor, former City Council Kenzie Bork worked on, she wanted to do before she departed the City Council. I know her constituents are seeking our assistance on this. I hope that we can suspend and pass this today. Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counsel Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worell, and please add my name. Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1215. Mr. Clark, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1215. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Present.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, present. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worell.
Yes.
Counsel Worell, yes. Docket number 1215 has received 10 votes in the affirmative and 1 vote present.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. We're on to the next docket, Mr. Clark, which is docket 1216.
Docket number 1216, Counsel Worell offer the following: Resolution to end legacy admission practices in higher education.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worell. Counsel Worell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Earlier this month, the Supreme Court decided to end affirmative action policies in our colleges and universities, stating that college admissions are zero-sum and a benefit provided to some applicants but not to others necessarily vantage the former at the expense of the latter. If we are to agree that this is true, then it's clear that legacy admissions are a benefit provided to some applicants but not others, and furthers the racial disparities in demographics of admitted students. The most egregious example can be found in Boston's area's most prestigious university, where a study found that 75% of admitted students were either athletes, children of graduates, donors, or children of faculty, which are considered to be ALDCs, would not have been admitted to Harvard if not for their legacy status. When 43% of white students at Harvard are ALDCs, but only 16% are Black Latinx and Asian American students are ALDCs, it is more than evident that there's an advantage being provided to a group of applicants who are overwhelmingly white and wealthy. In the City of Boston, we like to think of ourselves as the educational center of the world with our countless nationally-recognized colleges and universities across the city and greater Boston area. But we rarely stop to acknowledge the injustices that our institutions have perpetuated for centuries, or hold these institutions accountable to shift their policies despite the many advantages they are given through their tax-exempt statuses. When we look at the hard truth around our institutions, universities built on a wealth of slaveholders, universities that refuse to integrate and whose current admissions statistics demonstrate the continued inequities, and even universities that have funded harmful research to back racist policies like eugenics. It is clear that the overwhelming majority of their resources and history has not only been to the advantage of the wealthy and privileged, but to the detriment of Boston's growing minority population. We as a city cannot allow for any of our institutions to further racial inequities and systemic oppression. Ending legacy admissions is one way we can address the double standards that exist in our current system and create a more level playing field for all who choose to access higher education. We cannot continue to deny our Black and Brown children the opportunities to succeed in the world that are offered to white children. Affirmative action was created to support minority students who could not afford the resources to support them on their journey to higher education. But with the end of affirmative action, we must also bring about the end of legacy admission. So I ask my fellow counselors to please join me in passing this resolution that we could give the best opportunities to all of our children, not just those who are fortunate enough to benefit from our system, and I'm seeking to suspend and pass this resolution. Counsel President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Worell. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Just briefly, I just wanted to thank my colleague for introducing this, and just want to say that like oftentimes when we think about, and I, you know, think about affirmative action, we see it as the only challenge to the idea that we live in a meritocratic society, and I think that there are a lot of other, well, number one, I believe that that's false, and then I think there are a lot of other practices that really show that meritocracy is not the name of the game, and I think legacy admissions is one of that. I worked at a nonprofit for two years after college that really challenged that idea that when it comes to admissions, it's all based on meritocracy. So much of it is based on social capital and social networks, and I think that's really important for us to really think about and remember as we are entering into like what does this new stage look like. On Harvard's campus, there is, as Counsel Worell was saying, a lot of these universities were built on legacies of slavery. There is a crest after movement of students there, a plaque that acknowledges that Harvard's wealth, the royal family, which gave the money to found Harvard, was a slave-holding family. So the reckoning that we need to do when it comes to admissions first has to start with the idea, rejecting the idea that what we have right now is a meritocracy, and affirmative action somehow negated the fact that everyone gets into the school based on what they deserve and nothing else. So much of it is based on social capital and social status. So I want to thank my colleague for introducing this, and I hope that as we begin to talk more about redressing harm and finding pathways forward, that we really do understand that so much of what we're dealing with when we're talking about admissions is because we do not have a meritocratic society because of legacies of past harm and because of social capital being denied, especially to Black and Brown folks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And a few years ago, when we were talking about the exam schools, our counsel colleague then, O'Malley, introduced the word to me "merit" chop. I couldn't even pronounce it. So for those who are tuning in, for those who don't know what it means, because I had to Google it myself, it means relating to the characteristics of a society in which power is held by people selected according to merit. So when we think about merit, we think about those who have and those who have not. And so as we continue to have these conversations and as we continue to navigate, it is really important, especially as someone who grew up here in the City of Boston and went to Dorchester High, and had very limited access to quality education and opportunities, when we think about legacy, when we think about what this moment is all about, when we think about how we can level the playing field, I think that resolutions like this are not only ones that I support, but I also think that there needs to be a level of accountability to our institutions who are right now profiting off of the backs of our kids and not doing their return on that investment. So I think I really do applaud my counsel colleague for bringing this as a resolution, and I'd like to sign my name as a sponsor, but I also want to uplift that as the city, we need to do so much more to hold everyone accountable, because not everyone has the same opportunities, even when they're in high school, to be able to thrive, even if they get to go to college. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy. Please add the chair. Counsel Worell seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket 1216. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clark, can you please read 1217, please?
Docket number 1217, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket 1217. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clark, please read docket 1218.
Docket number 1218, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Flaherty.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket 1218. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clark, please read docket 1219.
Docket number 1219, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Coletta.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket 1219. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This docket has passed. Mr. Clark, please read docket 1220.
Docket number 1220, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket 1220. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We're on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are, yeah, that there are eight additional late file matters. The additional late file matters include the following: one absence letter, six.
The absent letter.
Okay, okay.
Six persons.
Okay. The absent letter has been withdrawn, six personnel orders.
And two resolutions.
And two resolutions. Six personnel orders and two resolutions. The late file matters should be on everyone's desk. I'm going to take a minute just to make sure that they are on everyone's desk at this time. Yeah, we'll do the first. If you don't have the late file matters, can you raise your hand? Well, Mr. Clark, we're going to vote to add them into the, we're going to take a vote to add all of these late file matters into the agenda. All of those in favor of adding these late file matters into the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. These late file matters have been added into the agenda. Mr. Clark, we'll do the personnel orders first.
First personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has been passed.
Second personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has passed.
Third late file personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Fourth late file matter personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Lara.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Fifth late file personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Sixth late file personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Next late file is filed by Counsel Michael Flaherty, Resolution in Support of the UPS Teamsters and Their Ability to Collectively Bargain. Whereas United Parcel Service, the single largest employer of Teamster members in the UPS contract, is the largest private sector collective bargaining agreement in the United States, covering more than 340,000 Teamsters. Be it resolved that the City Council calls upon elected officials at the state, local, and federal levels to stand with the UPS Teamsters in their efforts to collectively bargain.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I add the name of my at-large colleague, Ruth C. Louie Jean, and also move for suspension of the rules to also include the name of my at-large colleague, Counsel Kevin Murphy?
Hearing no objection. Counsel Louie Jean and Counsel Murphy are added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. As referenced, United Parcel Service UPS is the largest employer of Teamster members in the UPS contract, is the largest private sector collective bargaining agreement in the United States, covering more than 340,000 Teamsters. I speak as a former Teamster of Local 25, 10-year member, and also here as a member of the Boston City Council who's always supported collective bargaining to bargain for fair wages, safe working conditions, dignified retirement, and, most importantly, the right to withhold your labor if absolutely necessary. So, would like all of my colleagues to join in support of our Teamsters in their effort to bargain for a contract with UPS. And as referenced, it expires July 31st, and so time is of the essence. I know all of us have family, friends, and neighbors who work for UPS. They did miss a beat during the pandemic, as we all know, not only getting folks their essentials, but also working and transporting PPE across our country. So, when they were asked and when they were pushed, they delivered, and they'll continue to deliver. And our hope is that UPS will get back to the table and bargain in good faith so that the members of the Teamsters, not just here locally, who we all know and love and respect, but nationally, will get a contract that is consistent with their sweat equity and their contribution to that particular company, but their role every day in our country, and in particularly here in Boston. So, look forward to suspension and adoption so that we all can stand together with our local Teamsters, but also the national Teamsters, and as President, all of our friends, Sean O'Brien, who's doing a tremendous job on behalf of his members across the country and locally, Tom Myrie of Local 25 as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Move for suspension and adoption.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my at-large colleague for adding me, Counselor Michael Flaherty, and I just want to show signs of support for the UPS drivers who, UPS workers who deserve a fair contract. And I want to give a special shout-out to the solidarity of the UPS workers themselves. You know, full-time workers are not the ones at issue here, really. We're talking about the agreements and the just wages that the part-time workers at UPS really deserve and should be getting, and their full-time brothers and sisters who work with them on the job are standing with them and threatening to strike, which they absolutely should. And so there are beautiful moments of solidarity, both here with the part-time workers and full-time workers, or whether we're talking about writers, actors standing in solidarity with the writers, so much happening so that to stand in the gap of corporate greed and to really make sure that our workers are able to make a living wage. And so I stand in solidarity with the workers here at UPS, with Teamsters. I really support the work that they do here. My sister, two years ago, organized and is now a Teamster at her workplace, really encouraged by the work that everyone is doing to really make sure that our workers are able to, like Counsel Flaherty said, have dignified retirement, make a living wage, have health benefits as they continue to do the work that is important to many of us, making sure that we get our packages, make sure that we get our deliveries on time. And so, just standing in solidarity with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for allowing me to join you. I'm a dear friend of labor, grew up in a union household, was a union member myself before I became a City Councilor, BTU member for over 20 years. I know how important it is to support and stick up for our union workers, and we definitely have to use our power here on the council to send that message that we need to respect the right for any union member to collectively bargain. So, I'm here to support the Teamsters, the Teamsters locally 25, but to make sure that, because if it's collective bargaining that goes first, everything else will fall apart if we don't stand in solidarity and make sure that they can use their power, and I'll use my voice to make sure we amplify that. my voice to make sure we amplify that power here on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Please add my name, and I rise to fully support this resolution introduced by my at-large council colleagues, in support of our Teamster siblings and their effort to bargain in pursuit of economic dignity and fair labor practices. Communities around the country depend on the Teamsters who drive the trucks. Communities depend on those who do the back-breaking work of filling these trucks so that we get happy when we see our packages either on our doorstep or in our mailboxes. Without these workers, UPS wouldn't be making $13 billion profit. And the very least that they can do is treat them with the respect and dignity that they deserve to meet their demands. I am so proud to represent Charlestown, the base of our local Teamsters organization. I stand with Boston native President Sean O'Brien in this fight. I'll just say, in Sean, we trust and just know to all of our Teamsters siblings that we have your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Worel. Please add the chair. I also wanted to make a brief note. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for bringing this forward. It should also be noted that the Teamsters has raised millions of dollars for autism research in supporting programs for children with special needs throughout greater Boston. So I want to say a special thank you to Sean O'Brien for his commitment to children with special needs as well. Counsel Flaherty, Louisien, Murphy, seek suspension of rules and adoption of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. We're on to green sheets. You have one more? Okay.
Late file offered by Counsel Ricardo Arroyo, resolution condemning House Republicans on the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Committee, whereas on July 18, 2023, the Republican majority on the House Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Committee removed community project funding in support of LGBTQ+ organizations. And it be it ordered that the Boston City Council strongly condemn the actions of House Republicans on the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Royal. Counsel Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm outraged, actually, today at the actions of the House. The U.S. House Appropriation Committee yesterday voted to strip funding from three LGBTQ+ programs in housing developments that they had previously approved. Those projects, community projects, are in Pennsylvania and here in Massachusetts. This was just weeks after they had included that money in the annual transportation and housing spending bill. Specifically, the project here that was stripped was the Pride here in Hyde Park. Congresswoman Presley had sought, and I'm grateful to her for her leadership and her actions, both in protest of this and to get this funding. Were $2 million sought for the Pride here in Hyde Park, an affordable senior housing project. Of the 2,680 projects that they had previously approved, this new amendment that they accepted yesterday only struck three of them. All three of them were LGBTQ projects, one of them being the Pride. That $2 million would have supported the construction costs of converting a former Boston public school building, the Rogers in Hyde Park, into 74 units of high-quality, service-enriched, affordable housing for our seniors. This is a furtherance of attacks on LGBTQ+ communities and residents who support them. I just want to give some background on this. We are in July of 2023. In July of 2022, the Pride was physically attacked, graffiti all over it, death threats, threats of arson. The community came together then, and they'll come together now. This money was to cover overrun costs because of the rising price of construction everywhere to ensure that this project meets completion and fruition, and it's my hope that the city and the state step up here where Congress has done this harm. But I also want to make it clear that in my time as a counselor, there was no project that had received the kind of unanimous support from community stakeholders that the Pride received. Almost every time any project or any development comes up, regardless of the size of it, there's somebody generally who has opposition to it. This is probably the only project that I received where the community really rallied around it and was proud to put it forward. And it's my hope that as we see regression in how we treat our disenfranchised communities and communities like the LGBTQ+ community that has for much of its existence, unfortunately, I would argue, has not stopped being persecuted and harmed. This is furtherance of that, and it's my hope that the body will stand up, not just for the residents of Hyde Park and LGBTQ+ community here at home that was impacted by this, but in solidarity with those in Pennsylvania and those around the country who are suffering at the hands of policy that is really hatred disguised as politics. And it's my hope that as we move forward, this body works together to find a solution to the funding of this particular project, because it does mean so much to the city itself and to my district. And so I'm asking for suspension and passage on this bill. I'm sorry for... I'm certain that if I asked, I probably would have got cosponsors from everyone here, but this happened late breaking yesterday, and we had to file this literally this morning. But I ask that all of us vote in solidarity with Congresswoman Presley and with our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counsel Royal, for bringing this matter to our attention. I have to say, I am just learning about this from this moment with this resolution. I can't express how discouraged and upset I am that the Republican... House Republicans would actually pick out three projects, three projects that are... whose objective is to provide stable housing for elders who identify as part of the LGBT community. These people have suffered discrimination, abuse, all sorts of indignities over their lives, and now in their senior years, the Republicans in the House would deprive them of $2 million, $2 million. It's a very small amount of money, but this is basically... I would say it's hatred in the guise of policy. I agree with Counsel Royal on all of his points, and I think this is a shameful event, and I hope that we in the city and in the state can step up and help remedy this lack of funds, this loss of funds to the Pride. The Pride is a model community. I think it's a tremendous source of hope for seniors who identify as LGBT in our neighborhoods and across the city, and I hope we can fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I think it goes without saying that our most marginalized communities typically are the most deeply impacted by the most pressing issues that we see, not just in our city but all across the country, and housing has been no different. Members of the LGBTQ community have higher rates of homelessness and have higher rates of discrimination when attempting to secure housing. And I think that this action by House Republicans is just another example of how right-wing, anti-LGBTQ rhetoric has taken a hold all across the country. All aspects of living a healthy, thriving life for LGBTQ communities are under attack, all the way from healthcare to their housing. And I think what Counsel Braden said is incredibly important, that this is hatred ultimately couched as legislation. I am happy to condemn and support this resolution on behalf of Counsel Arroyo. As a representative of a district that has one of the highest concentrations of members of the LGBTQ community, I continue to be a staunch advocate for ensuring that at the local level, we are standing against all of the things that threaten the quality of life for our most marginalized residents. So thank you, Counsel Arroyo, for putting this on the floor. I think that we have a responsibility, not just for the people here in Massachusetts and to the people at the Pride, but to stand in solidarity with all members of the LGBTQ community across the country, and I think we can do that with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The chair recognizes Counsel Louisien. Counsel Louisien, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to stand because it's just been a really tough past few weeks, months, years for our LGBTQ+ community here in Boston, and both legislatively and socially. And we just really do need to stand in solidarity as a Hyde Park resident and at-large city councilor. I was there when... Afterwards, when the Pride was vandalized, where Gretchen Van Ness and Aileen LaMontour have been doing everything they can to make sure that the Pride is... Just so that folks know, LGBTQ+ friendly, not exclusively. It's open to everyone, and the point is to create inclusive communities, inclusive spaces, so that everyone can feel comfortable and so that we can create microcosms of the type of communities that we should be living in and that we should be building, one where people feel safe to be themselves and be fully expressive. And all the time that House Republicans waste on legislating harm instead of on the issues that matter most to residents. How do we get better schools? How do we make sure that we have a country that's responding to the climate justice issues of our time? Instead of doing that, they spend their time trying to deprive communities of their civil rights, trying to make communities that already feel excluded, that already suffer disproportionately when it comes to mental health issues as a result of our lack of inclusivity, trying to marginalize them even more. And so this is just painful. I want to recognize that this is painful for so many people in our community who identify as LGBTQ+ to again and again and again and again be told that we don't want you, we don't accept you. That is not the language that you are getting from the Boston City Council with this resolution that I know is going to pass unanimously. And I just want folks to know that we stand in solidarity with people in all ways, in all ways, because it's important that we reject any sort of semblance that this is anything that we agree with, in both how we talk about our LGBTQ+ community, our trans community that we are creating and working for and striving for, communities where we all feel included and where we all belong. So I'm sorry to members of the LGBTQ+ community who feel heavy, and we share that heaviness with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louisien. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to thank my colleague for bringing this to the council. I just want to stand and affirm my support for this resolution, and I also think that as I continue to navigate the landscape of politics, what I realize is that at the end of the day, you know, resolution after resolution, policy after policy, that the people really do have the power. And if we not just stand in solidarity, but then we also write emails and stand up in solidarity with our LGBTQ+ community, then that's how we are going to move the needle forward, because ultimately, yes, Republicans are doing harm, but as a people, we have an opportunity to affirm those who are living here in the city of Boston, to say, I see you, I love you, I respect you, and I'm going to stand up and fight alongside you. And I think that that's what this moment calls for, is yes, resolutions, yes, policy changes, but I also think that the people need to start recognizing that we all need to lean in, whether or not we are a member of that community or not, we're all being impacted by the things that are happening in the federal government.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louisien, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worel. Please add the chair. Before we take a vote, I did want to speak briefly on it as someone that represents a large LGBTQ+ community. Thank you to Counsel Arroyo for bringing this forward, for your important work and leadership. I also want to recognize Counselor Tim McCarthy, who also supported this development many years ago, making sure that there was an opportunity for residents to live in Hyde Park from the LGBTQ+ community. Also want to recognize Counsel Flaherty as well for his longtime support of the community. Counsel Arroyo, seek suspension of the rules in adoption of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. We're on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to pull from the green sheets may do so now. The chair recognizes Counsel Worel. Counsel Worel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. I would like to pull docket number 0970 on page five of the green sheets.
Counsel Worel, you have other dockets.
Oh, you want me to read all of them? All right. And also, I'd like to pull dockets 0894 through 0897 on page three and four of the green sheets, 0963 to 0966 on page five and six, and docket number 1101 through 1104 on page six and seven.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, at this time, we're going to read those into the record, but we also have to poll the committee as well.
The Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, Counsel Worel.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Baker. And Counsel Fernando Sanderson.
Properly before the body. The chair recognizes Counsel Worel. Counsel Worel, you're going to speak on all of them or...
I'm just going to give a brief overview on them. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Document number 0970, message in order authorizing the City of Boston Department of Innovation and Technology to enter into a contract for payment processing services for a term of up to five years. Document number 0894, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $206,006 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston School AFSMI lunch monitors. Document number 0895, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public School Department for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $206,006 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston School Lunch Monitors. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% in December 2020 and 2.5% to be given in September of 2021 and September of 2022, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 8th, 2023. Document number 0896, message in order for your approval in ordinance to reduce fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve of collective bargaining by $68,769 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston School Police Superior Officers Federation. Document number 0897, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools Department for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $68,769 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston School Police Superior Officers Federation. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2024. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 2.5%, 2.5% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 8th, 2023. Document number 0963, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $85,600 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and SENA, Local 9158. Document number 0964, message in order for your approval, a supplemental appropriation order for the Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $85,600 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and SENA, Local 9158. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, and October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2025. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases... The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 1.5% in January of 22, 2022, 2% in January 2023, 2% in January 2024, and 2% in January 2025. The agreements all contain other benefits, including increased hazardous duty differentials, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 2nd, 2023. Docket number 0965, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $32,334 to provide funding for the Parks and Recreation Department for the fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Park Rangers Association. Docket number 0966, message in order for your approval, a supplemental appropriation order for the Parks and Recreation Department for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $32,334 to cover the fiscal year 23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Park Rangers Association. The terms of the contracts are July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 22nd, 2023. Docket number 1101, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $186,862 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Schools and SEIU Local 888, Planning and Engineering. Docket number 1102, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $186,862 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and SEIU Local 888, Planning and Engineering. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2023, and September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 12th, 2023. Docket number 1130, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $27,803 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and the AFL-CIO Council 93, Local 2814, Storekeepers. And docket number 1104, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $27,803 to cover the fiscal 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between Boston Public Schools and AFL-CIO Council 93, Local 2814, Storekeepers. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2023, and September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, and 2% to be given in September of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk, June 12th, 2023.
And thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before we go to Counsel Worell, I do want to, I know Counsel Mejia recognized, acknowledged this youth group. The name of this youth group is Inspiring Today's Youth from Dorchester. They were excellent. We want to welcome them to the city council, and we're just so fortunate to have you guys here, and your professionalism and engagement in city government is very impressive. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
And we hope we can come back in the next week or so because they want to discuss about funding in the community, safety in our schools, and the housing problem that a lot of the students face. So anybody in the council, give me a call, and I'll set you up for that meeting so we can get these kids.
Thank you.
Adopted into doing this type of work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. We're onto, we're onto, the chair recognizes Counsel, thank you, thank you, everyone, for being with us again, for the excellent behavior. We're onto Counsel Worell. Counsel Worell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn, and thank you to our young people, and shout out to Danny and Clifton for all the work that they do in the community.
The Do-It contract is to engage in the five-year contract for payment processing services, which research suggests better allows the city to deliver critical payment services with better reliability and lower costs. Moving between providers is both costly and time-consuming, requiring significant periods of overlap and migration. With contracts requiring rebidding and awarding by October 2023, this needs to be approved prior to summer break to ensure Do-It can adequately negotiate contracts. And then the union contracts are impacting our schools, parks, and health commission, each fall significantly below $600,000, and provides adjustments consistent with other approved contracts. And given the low amount, consistent modification, union approval, and our limited summer operating schedule, asks that we approve these contracts today so that BPS, BPHC, and the Parks Department can initiate their new compensation policies. Thank you.
Counsel Worell, are you through speaking on all of these?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to vote individually on each, on each docket. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0894. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0895. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0896. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0897. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0963. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0964. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0965. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0966. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 0970. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 1101. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 1102. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 1103. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counsel Worell seeks passage of docket 1104. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, we're onto the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there is two additions to the consent agenda. The chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're onto memorials. For Counsel Royo, Pearline James, Louisa Gandara, Savon Ellis. For Counsel Royo and Counsel Flaherty, James Gregory Lehman. For Counsel Braden, Dr. Susan Love. For counselors, Flynn, Flaherty, Baker, and Murphy, Tucker, Carson, Skenderian, and that's Dusty Rhodes's son. For counselors, Flynn and Flaherty, David Nuna. For Counsel Flynn and Flaherty, Ian Phalen, Gloria Melachio. For Counsel Laura, Flynn, and Flaherty, Carol White. For Counsel Louie Jean, Fernando Chavez Arroyo, Marilena Ricker, Xavier Ellis. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of those individuals that we mentioned. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, August 9th, at 12:00 noon before we adjourn. I want to say thank you to my city council colleagues and their staff. I want to say thank you to the city clerk, the assistant clerk, the stenographer, city council central staff. I want to say thank you to the security throughout the building, which includes the men and women of the Boston Police, and the men and women of the most diverse labor union in the city, of city employees, the municipal police officers that do a tremendous job every day protecting the city officials that are here, but also the public as well. So I want to thank the Boston Police and the municipal police as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.